Unknown participant is now exiting.
Okay, we can go ahead and get started. It's 6:05.
Okay, her line dropped. We're gonna try to get her back on.
Hi Scott, it's Tia, dialed back in. I hope that we're not having troubles again. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna merge the calls and yeah, hopefully they won't. I'm gonna merge the lines and hopefully it doesn't drop again. So please hold.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Okay, she dropped again. I'll try to get her back on. Standby, we're trying to get her to dial back in.
What's happening?
Uh, the calls keep dropping. We're uh, trying to find a different way to make this happen.
Thank you. Hi Scott, it's Tia. I don't know if you can hear me. I can dial into this and I can dial, I can see that you've dialed into the host line. Now you'll need to push add call and then dial into the Teams meeting. And then um, once you're dialed into the Teams meeting, then you will press merge calls. And both lines will, and I can run it from there since I dialed back in.
Standby.
Thank you.
Katie, um, I just got a message from the city attorney that we really need to um, state what the problem is.
Uh, the problem is a Verizon issue on my line. This is Tia speaking. And I'm able to dial into both numbers, but I'm not able to merge them. And so Scott is going to, he's going to do it for, on his end. Um, and then I will be able to run it from there, but I can't merge the calls this week on my end. And I did think that this was resolved several weeks ago, but apparently it was not. That might be Scott.
We really need to test these systems beforehand.
I agree. This is a tough one.
We did think, my apologies, mayor, we thought we had it resolved. Have you been able to do the merge yet?
Yes, we've done the merge.
Okay, um, oh, and my line just dropped right now. So what I'm going to do, Katie, if you would just call Aronda's name, I'm gonna bring her live while you, um, and then you can um, call her name.
Okay. Aronda, do you have?
Unknown participant is now exiting.
Okay, we can't hear anything. PRL, Scott, what is happening? We can't hear anything and it's echoing now.
I'm not sure what's happening with that. I've, I've lost Tia.
Yes, Aronda, I'm, you're, you're, your time is, yes, we can, I can hear you, but the council can't, oh, now the council can hear you. We're gonna go ahead and start your time over if you would start your statement over. Our apologies, there's high technical problems tonight. Okay. I speak tonight not just as a grieving mother, but as a part of a growing circle of families. For our sons at the hands of law enforcement. Tonight, we stand with the Belt Stubblefield family because we know their pain all too well. Earlier this year, Veronica Seabron lost her son Jalen. Now the Belt Stubblefield family is suffering that same unbearable loss with Ray John. And I am here because.
Unknown participant is now exiting.
I'm sorry, but the call has failed and dropped again.
Um, I've just asked the city attorney a question. This is Mayor Mike Corrigan, whether or not uh, we could move this to the end of the regular meeting. Uh, giving the opportunity to, to fix the technical issues here. Um, uh, city attorney?
Mayor, I, if we can't get this fixed, we can't have the council meeting. We've gotta have the opportunity for people to come and, and comment on the public hearings that are scheduled. So I, I know we're frustrated, Scott, I'm not trying to get on you, but we, yeah, we gotta figure out what's going on.
But they can't speak on agenda items anyway. Can we move it later on in the agenda? Uh, at the end of the regular meeting?
It's not working for anybody calling in.
It's not.
So there's, I mean.
So wait, so mayor, we could go, we could, we could do, you know, on the agenda, we could go through and get through the, I don't know, because I, we get through 9C2 and then we'd have to stop because we have to have the opportunity for citizens to, to call in.
Well, I think we'll have to work on how to reschedule this meeting. If that, if that, if we don't have, if staff doesn't think they get this fixed um, with any kind of a delay, uh, and we can't have the, the regular meeting unless we have this, then we have no choice in which to uh, reschedule this meeting.
Mayor, this is, this is Scott Nimmin. Can we call a five-minute recessor and let us regroup and determine if we can fix this issue or not?
The time is uh, 6:20. Uh, we will stand in recess. You think you need five minutes or do you need more than that?
Well, yeah, then let's do 6:30 if you, if we're concerned.
Okay, uh, we will stand in recess until 6:30. The council will send recess.
Um, and take the speakers off of music hold. I think we're ready because it's holding right now. I have reset every line. Um, are we okay to go or are we waiting till 6:30?
We need to wait till 6:30 until the mayor comes back and calls this, calls the session and then it'll go full on.
Very good. Okay, I didn't, I couldn't hear for sure. My lines had dropped, so this.
There you go.
All right, and to take it off music hold. Music hold ended.
Hi, Aronda. Um, the council was not able to hear most of what you had to say, so we're gonna go ahead and let you say it again if you are willing. Go ahead.
I speak tonight not just as a grieving mother, but as a part of a growing circle of families who have been forced to bury our sons at the hand of law enforcement. Tonight, we stand with the Belt Stubblefield family because we know their pain all too well. Earlier this year, Veronica Seabron lost her son Jalen. Now the Belt Stubblefield family is suffering that same unbearable loss with Ray John. And I am here because all of these lives are connected. These tragedies are not separate stories. They are chapters in the same book, written by the same system. Kailin, Jalen, Ray John, three young black men, three families along many others shattered. One pattern that cannot be denied. Aurora, your system sees our people as threats before it ever sees us as humans. Your officers are quick to pull the trigger and then render no aid. When Kailin was killed, I cried out for accountability. When Jalen was killed, we cried out for accountability. Now Ray John family joins that cry. How many cries will it take before Aurora and Colorado stop dismissing our pains as collateral damage? We will not be silent or stop demanding for justice. We will not stop fighting for truth. And we will not stop until this pattern ends and our children's lives are valued as sacred. The Aurora community, the Aurora community has gotten fed up with shoot first and ask no questions later. We are continuously growing in numbers, standing in unity and solidarity for justice, demanding accountability, and we will succeed. And the great part is that there's nothing, I mean nothing, that you all can do about it. Our children's death will not be in vain. Justice for Kailin Lewis, justice for Jalen Seabron, and justice for Ray John, along with many more families that's out there has lost their children to Aurora police. We will not be silent until justice is served. We will not be silent until justice is served.
Next is Sophia. Sophia, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, um, just before we begin, I'm sorry, are, is this gonna continue so everybody has time to speak who's in queue? I just don't wanna be taking up space for those who are here to comment on Ray John.
Everyone will have a chance to speak.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Uh, my name is Sophia. I'm a fourth generation Coloradan and longtime Aurora resident who's been listening. I'm a fourth generation Coloradan and longtime Aurora resident who's been listening to city council meetings for months. I was appalled by the outrage expressed over the No Your Rights trainings in the previous meeting. Unless these comments came from a place of misunderstanding the contents of these trainings, what was that implied? That you do not want your constituents educated on their own legal rights. These trainings are not about evading law enforcement as was stated. They're about ensuring community members understand their legal rights and responsibilities in employment, housing, public accommodations, or interactions with law enforcement. Every part of these trainings is firmly grounded within the law and within the legal framework of this country, suggesting otherwise sense the disturbing message that there is a belief that certain law enforcement practices can only succeed when community members are kept unaware of their rights and how law enforcement should legally operate. That should concern everyone and should make you reflect on what operations you're supporting. Knowing your rights should be a nonpartisan issue. Admonishing these trainings is like forcing someone to play a board game and being furious when they read the rulebook or being furious at your coworkers standing nearby while it's being read. I recognize these comments were likely the quiet part being said out loud, but I want you to know I heard it clearly, and I want to stress white constituents reject this rhetoric and these dangerous ideas too. My perspective does not matter more than those of minority voices, but unfortunately, it seems to carry more weight within parts of this council. The childish, ignorant, hateful rants in these meetings are beneath the office you hold. Aurora deserves better. Educate yourself on what you were angry about and do better. Justice for Ray John, Jalen, and Kailin.
Next is Erin. Erin, go ahead. You have two minutes.
I planned, I planned to call in to respond to a personal attack made on me at the last meeting, a constituent of Aurora, but Saturday, August thirty, it changed everything. That afternoon, I volunteered at an event this council no longer supports. Later, I planned to stand with, later, I had planned to stand with a friend fighting for change in Aurora. But before I could, I watched live and faceless another officer involved shooting in our city. What I saw left me shaken, speechless, and terrified for a friend who was caught up in the incident, who had no choice of their own. Aurora Police Department has a long history of systematic racism and a piece of authority. It desperately needs new leadership and a new heart for the community it serves. The man who was shot may not have a spotless, spotless past, but nothing justifies shooting a human being and then telling, and then failing to give him aid. That is not policing. That is inhumanity. I want to be able to call in one day and say, great job, A P D. I'm proud of my police department, but right now I can't and I won't because it would betray my belief in racial equity, dignity, dignity and inclusion. Those that are values Aurora claims to stand for, yet time and again, our actions show otherwise, especially towards people with darker skin. The video made it clear, non-lethal message was possible. Why did the officer act alone instead of waiting for backup? When is it ever acceptable to strike someone in the back of the head and call it de-escalation? Officers have a duty to protect the public and themselves. Acting alone in a volatile situation is not de-escalation, is reckless and endangers everyone. I'm tired and tired of reading about misconduct, tired of watching it happen, tired of officers whose histories of discipline still patrol in our streets as representatives of this city. I want to know why. Aurora must be better. We must end systematic racism and abuse of power, starting with A P D. We need leadership that says diversity, equity, and inclusion are not slogans, but sacred commitments. Only then will residents like me be able to say without hesitation, great job, A P D. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next is Haley. Haley, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Haley Foster and I coordinate Aurora Partners for Thriving Youth. A P D began in two thousand and sixteen as a community-led coalition focused on keeping Aurora young people healthy and safe. Our goal is to build protective factors like elevating youth voice, strengthening community connection, and helping schools create healthier environments. In two thousand and twenty-three, Aurora's Healthy Kids Colorado data showed that among students who attempted to buy tobacco or nicotine products, eighty-five percent were not refused because of their age, and one in four Aurora students say they were able to get these products directly from a retailer. That tells us the gap isn't just peer access, it's retail access, it's inconsistent compliance. We're seeing more and more young people exposed to new and emerging drugs like kratom, certain, uh, certain synthetics and nitrous oxide. These are often sold in tobacco outlets with little oversight. It's clear we need a protective approach. The Tobacco Retail License Ordinance is a practical, common sense tool. Licensing gives us, gives the city a clear line of sight into who is selling, where they are located, and whether they're following the rules. It levels the playing field for responsible retailers, supports effective compliance checks, and helps prevent underage sales. In recent weeks, we reached out to your offices and we met with several of you. Thank you for your time, your thoughtful questions and your support. We would love to meet individually with each member to discuss the details in depth, hear any concerns, and share brief city-level data. Our coalition is ready to partner to help, uh, help tailor T R L to Aurora's needs to support rollout and to educate, um, for retailers. Our goal is simple, reduce youth access, support responsible businesses, and keep more kids focused on learning and thriving. Thank you for your leadership and for your opportunity to work together. Um, I look forward to connecting one-on-one with any members who haven't met. Thank you. Um, you can reach me at h foster at Aurora.
Next is Pastor Topaz. Pastor, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Good evening. I am calling because I too am concerned about the ongoing murder of unarmed black men. With the presentation to community, that is a false narrative of the events that are taking place. The press conference held by our chief was one that depicted details that suggested something other than what really took place. It is clear, it was clear to all who were present that there could have been, uh, unlethal methods used to gain control over that circumstance. Some have already been mentioned, like waiting for backup. Our community has been traumatized over and over again. We need to be able to trust the city council, city management, and police officers that our human lives matter. Our black lives, brown lives matter just as much as anyone else. And right now, the messaging that is given does not suggest that we are valued in the same way as others are valued in this community. To be able to unalive a person in broad daylight in front of an entire community without consideration for the impact was selfish and not professional. And we are not backing down with regard to accountability and our expectation that this police officer and the department as a whole be held accountable and the consent decree must be put in action. It, it feels like there's no point in having a consent decree because we have not seen any change.
Your time is up.
In the functioning since the decree was put in place. Thank you.
Next is Veronica. Veronica, go ahead. You have two minutes.
Earlier this year, I had to do the unthinkable. I buried my son after he was lynched by the deputy Nicholas Brian Moore. And it hurts me to know that I grieve alongside another family that now knows the pain, that was forced to know this pain. To the family of Ray John Belt Stubblefield, I see you, I feel you, and I stand with you. When someone you love is stolen by the very system sworn to protect, it leaves a wound that never closes. And every time another family, another mother, another parent has to bury their child from these actions, my wound bleeds more. What happened to Ray John is not isolated, just as what happened to my son was not isolated. These are not tragic mistakes. These are patterns. When there is consistency and repetitiveness, it is considered a pattern. This is a pattern of policing that targets, traumatizes, and takes lives of our communities. I wanted you all to hear me. I want you all to listen. Our children's lives are not accidents and they are, and their deaths are not inevitable. I speak tonight as a mother, a grieving mother, but also as part of the community that refuses to be broken. My son's name, Jalen DeAngelo Seabron, and Ray John Belt Stubblefield's name will not be forgotten. We will keep saying their names until there are no more names to add. To this council, we are burying our children while you debate and delay. This is unacceptable. I stand here with the Belt Stubblefield family to say enough is enough. These patterns must end. Our community deserves to live. Thank you.
That was the last speaker for the public comment listening session.
Uh, very well, um, we will, um, the time is now, uh, six forty-three. Uh, we will reconvene, um, at, um, six fifty-five.